You're not ready? Okay. I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. A motion is in order for approval of the closed session agenda. Hold on.
Madam Chairwoman?
Mr. Dolch.
I move that Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended. Meeting called to order. I think we just say that.
This is Jesse. I'll second that.
Okay.
Did everybody join the meeting? Because I didn't see it.
Yes.
Did you leave it?
Okay. Okay, the first was by Mr. Dolch. Second was by, was it Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Okay.
You actually added a motion?
Can everybody read this and make sure you did join the meeting?
Okay, I need to read. What did I do? On this motion.
Did you go? Did you go last?
I heard about it.
I did. On every level it was made.
Once again, I got kicked out of the meeting.
The vote is five yes, two absent. Sawyers, Satterwhite, and Williams. Motion passed.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and take action on the appointments and releases of specific employees under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 7. Two, to discuss and consult legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemption pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2 and 7. And three, to discuss and take action on student disciplinary matters relating to the reassignment appeals of specific students under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2 and 7.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Rawson?
I second.
Is there a discussion? Discussion?
I'm sorry. Mr. Doig was in the last one, 2.0. Y'all already voted on this motion.
Yeah.
You voted approval of closed session agenda. No, they didn't.
We don't, that's what we voted on.
That's what I just read. It's about you did a closed session.
Approval of closed session.
Approval of closed session agenda. He was on the wrong agenda item.
Approval is 102. Enter closed session is 201.
Yeah, I just read the motion to enter closed session.
But you didn't do approval of closed session agenda.
Literally, we just voted on it.
What she's saying is that 1.02, we actually did not.
Yeah, we did.
That's what you said and then we voted on it.
Technically.
We voted on motion being a closed session.
It looks like 2.01 is the one that appeared on the screen. That we actually voted on.
That's why I said, did you vote on the wrong agenda item?
Okay, we need to correct that. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Jenkins is going to correct this. The first one was Dolch. And Brand. Go down to Brand. Please.
The vote is five yes, three absent, Sawyer, Satterwhite, and Williams. Motion passed.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will enter closed session and return in about an hour. We're moving to item 601. Moving to the adoption of the closed session agenda. A motion is in order.
Mrs. Jesse?
Mr. Brand.
I'll make that motion. Recommend that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Madam Chairwoman, I'll second.
Discussion? Discussion? No discussion? The roll call. Allison's not here. Okay. Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. So we have Mr. Brand. Who first, who was the second person? Who made the second?
Mr. Doig.
Mr. Dolch? Okay. No discussion? Let's vote. Ms. Rawson?
The vote is six yes, two absent, Sawyer and Satterwhite. Motion passed.
We're moving on to item 701. Certification.
Madam Chair.
Certification of the closed session agenda.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of October 4, 2017 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be resolved that Prince William County School Board hereby certifies at the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Second?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Rawson? Yes. Discussion? Vote? Ms. Williams? Did you abstain? Oh, okay, thank you.
The vote is five yes, one abstained, Williams, two absent, Sawyer and Satterwhite. Motion passed.
We're moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order. Okay, public meeting, sorry. Have to hit the gavel. I would like to call this meeting to order for Prince William County School Board. The invocation, as we're going to have a moment of silence. And that is at the request of the chairman. Pledge of allegiance. Who do we have? Are there students in the audience who do the pledge? Come on up.
Got a scout too.
A scout? Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please come back and give us your name and the name of your school. Sorry, I thought you were out of here.
Nathan Peck, Worcester Elementary School.
Thank you. We're moving. Moving on to the adoption of the the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order.
Madam Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Madam Chair. Second?
I second.
Discussion? We're going to vote. Ms. Williams first, and the second was by Ms. Rawson. Ms. Rawson. Let's vote. Did it? Yeah, we're good.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Sawyer and Satterwhite. Motion passed.
Now we're moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Mrs. Jesse?
Mr. Brand?
I'll second that, please.
Let's vote. Thank you.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Sawyer and Satterwhite. Motion passed.
Moving on to 1201, citizens' comments. Looks like we have nine. We have nine people that signed up in advance. And we don't have any additional signups, do we? Okay, okay. If we were are still with, you'll have 30 minutes. And, I mean, not 30 minutes. You will have three minutes. And within the 30 minutes, some of you may take 30, in a 30-minute window, we will go forward with any speakers at the door. We don't have any. Three minutes to speak, and I will keep the time, the light on the monitor will indicate your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decorum manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name, address, and for the record for the record when you approach the podium. Let me call out the names. We have only nine persons, so I'll call all nine. Nick Ricky Morales, Nathan Peck, Jennifer Gilli, Catherine Porter Lucas, Damon Saron. Saron, Katherine Metz, Steve Bender, Mark Rafa, Riley O'Casey, Melinda Masters, Michael Bishop, and Janine Lawson. Could you please come up front? I think our first two speakers are Ricky Morales and Nathan Peck.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Walts. I am Ricky Morales, HHY Students' Lead Team member from Brentsville District High School. I'm here along with Nathan Peck, a fifth grader from Westridge Elementary School regarding the upcoming October 23 through 31 Red Ribbon Week activities across Prince William County Public Schools. We are asking you to join us in celebration across the school division and community by participating in the oldest and largest drug prevention campaign in the United States. Each individual school and office will plan Red Ribbon Week themes, spirit days, and activities.
Hello. The Office of Student Services Substance Abuse Prevention Team appreciates your support and encouraging students to enter the 2017 Red Ribbon Week art contest. Students in grades one through eight may enter an original drawing or painting that features this year's theme. Your future is key, so stay drug-free. Check with your principals and art teachers for contest rules and information. Deadline to submit artwork is October 31. Winners will be recognized and awarded various prizes at the November 14th School Board meeting.
We ask everyone to show their commitment and support of the fight against drugs on October 24th by wearing red in honor of Get Rid of Drugs Day in Prince William County. Don't forget, fill the feeds, post, tweet, or snap during Red Ribbon Week. Stay tuned for Prince William County Schools' public service announcement during superintendent's time. HHY Students' Lead Team members will be passing out red ribbons at their school during Red Ribbon Week. We would like to send a special thank you and sincere appreciation to Heather Marnstein from PWCS Community Services Board for partnering with us and providing all the red ribbons for our school board members as well as the staff and students in our schools. Nathan will come forward and give each of you a red ribbon. PWCS is committed to teaching students about drug resistance not only during Red Ribbon Week but all year long. Please contact Mallory Murray, Office of Student Services, at 703-791-8561 for more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Gilli?
Hi. Is it okay if I speak for Jennifer? She had a last minute out, and I was wondering if I could speak in her place or if that's not allowed? No? Okay, all right, well. Okay.
Katherine Metz. Katherine Porter Lucas, Damon Saron, and Katherine Metz.
Good evening, I'm Katherine Metz. I'm here with Katherine Porter Lucas and Damon Saroni to the board. And Dr. Walts, we want to thank you for this opportunity. We're really here to thank Mr. Brand. When a school loses a teacher who is established and respected, as a principal, you hope to find someone who lives up to the experiences students had with that teacher. You know you've hit the mark when the students say, "The teacher is great." "The new teacher is great, Ms. Metz." Different, but great. It makes for the best situation and a smooth transition. Mr. Brand, I want to thank you for a smooth transition. You've been incredible, different, but incredible. I also want to thank you for channeling your inner Paul Harvey and always asking for the rest of the story. You welcomed input from students, parents, and staff, and always gave every situation careful consideration from a variety of perspectives. You were visible and asked how you could help. And please know that you did help us in many ways, and we have appreciated all of your efforts to do what is best for students, to support staff, and to listen and support parents.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Walts. Mr. Brand, on behalf of the middle grades in the Brentsville District, including Gainesville Middle, Marstella Middle, Pennington Traditional School, and the Noakesville School, we sincerely thank you for the work that you have done in support of our students, staff, and schools as an acting school board member. Marstella would like to especially thank you for providing support and guidance as you work together to build positive partnerships with stakeholders. The Noakesville School expresses their appreciation for you, for your leadership, and support of the school community. As a former Prince William County educator, you utilize your background to highlight and promote positive practices happening in our schools. We appreciate your advocacy in improving our school system and in helping us continue on the journey to a world-class school division. At Gainesville, you have shown your support at various school events, including concerts, sporting events, recognition celebrations, and back-to-school nights. We also appreciate the time that you spent sharing with our school advisory council in order for parents to understand your role and the impact that you and the school board can have in Prince William County. Although it is bittersweet that you will no longer be our school board representative as we welcome back Mr. Trenum, we consider ourselves extremely fortunate to still have you as a Gainesville parent and look forward to continuing our partnership in that capacity. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Walts and school board. When Mr. Brand first told me he was going to be the acting member for the Brentsville District, I'm a selfish person. And I quickly asked, what does that mean for Piney Branch because of his involvement there? He's been the leader of our PBAC, our advisory committee. And I was concerned on how that would impact my school. What I can say is, it has done more to enhance our school than anything. It has widened his lens. It has allowed him to take a global look at issues. And not one he kept in focus, Piney Branch, his family, and this job as well. And I commend you for that, and I thank you. That's yours, it's your back.
Mr. Bender?
I came fast. I wasn't ready. My name is Steve Bender. My address is on file. Members of the board, Dr. Walts and in particular, Mr. Brand. First that I'm on my list tonight was a very heartfelt thank you to you, Mr. Sean Brand, for your tireless service over the last 13 months as you filled in for Commander Gil Trenum during his deployment to Africa. It's been an interesting year. You have had to deal with some issues you probably didn't expect. The 060 gender policy, the board polling policy, school naming, boundary issues on the new school that left an elementary school at well over 100% capacity, length of the teacher workday, a second consecutive annual raise for the staff, the broken tradition of rotating the vice chairmanship, attempts to reject a $20 million gift from the county board, question of whether a special meeting to accept that gift was legitimate, the illegal alteration of the minutes following that meeting, professionalizing our nurses, arguing parliamentary procedure more times than I could count, defending the board's right to have their lawyer sit with them up there at the dais, and of course, the censure resolution of the chairman for multiple and egregious violations of the school board code of ethics. It probably wasn't what you thought you were signing up for. When Gil first announced his orders, I know that across the Brentsville District, people's reaction was, "Lord, help us, please." The Navy put a big hole in this board when the commander left. But you have done an admirable job in filling in for him. You've diligently studied and prepared for every meeting. You have given time away from family to attend countless school functions. You've responded to constituent needs and staff requests. I was honored to work with you on the Gainesville and Brentsville Budget Committee as co-members, and I was especially honored to serve you while you sat up there in the last year. I don't know Mr. Trenum's plans for 2019 yet. But if you are willing to make this your avocation on a non-interim basis, I want to say that I'm the first to say you've got my full support for an elected seat on the board. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. My second item I'm going to skip over because Mr. Sawyer's is not here tonight. And instead, Mrs. Rawson, thank you for being, if I could steal from Mr. Kennedy, a profile in courage. After the first meeting or two, I wasn't sure what to expect. But the growth and the leadership that I've seen come from you in the last almost two years has been incredible. And yes, you're backed by the Democrats, and yes, I'm a conservative Republican, but I've told you before, you will always have my support for what you've done up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Rafa?
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Walts, my name's Mark Rafa. My address is on file. And I'm here tonight solely just to thank Mr. Brown for his year of service to the board and what he's done. I've not always agreed with everything he's done on the board, but I will always support the fact that he was very responsive to every question I may have asked of him. And I knew he would do his due diligence and make informed, fact-based decisions on every matter in front of the board. And for all you have done, Mr. Brown, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Riley O'Casey?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Walts, my name is Riley O'Casey. My address is on file. Mr. Brand, I would like to thank you for the incredible work you have done on the school board this past year. You have remained the consummate professional I would expect from a former high school teacher and PWA member. It takes a special person to step in and uphold the integrity of this position. It takes a special person to step in and uphold the integrity of this position, and you have done that. Your continuous outreach for input and suggestions as to what was best for this school division and our students mirror the belief of PWEA: issue-driven, party-blind. You truly, truly care about the students and employees of Prince William County schools, and I thank you for your dedication and commitment. I wish you the best of luck, and I suspect that you will still be involved, so I expect you to keep in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Masters.
Hi, my name is Melinda Masters. My address is on file with the board. Thank you, Dr. Walts, and fellow board members for letting me speak. What can I say that's not already been said? I'm a parent. I've enjoyed working with you. I'd take six months off for medical reasons, but I've enjoyed the opportunity to get to you, now you. I know when Mr. Trenum was first given these orders, a lot of us in the Brentsville district felt whoever steps in for him has some really big shoes to fill. You didn't just fill them, but you made all of us proud to get to know you as our school board representative during that time. There's a card up here for you somewhere? Thank you. Just thank you for everything you've done. It's been a joy to have you up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Walts, members of the board. My name is Michael Bishop, and my address is on file with the clerk. Even though I hold a position at Patriot High School, I want to be very clear, I'm here tonight as a private citizen. I feel compelled to share my thoughts about one particular member of this board, and that's Mr. Sean Brand. Mr. Brand, in the face of politically charged and significantly divided times, has kept the main thing as the main thing: an unwavering focus on children and the improvement of their educational experience. He has not allowed petty dysfunctional behavior or artificial drama to overtake his position and focus. He builds bridges as opposed to burning them. He shows up for school events, supports teachers and staff, and provides assistance when asked. He represents the interests of those in the Brentsville district and never jumps to a conclusion on any one issue. He has continually provided a steady voice of reason on this board. He has acted as an adult tasked with the awesome responsibility of serving the needs of children. The manner in which he presents himself as our representative is greatly appreciated and should be imitated by others going forward. The role of a school board member should primarily be about the children in our school system and providing employees with the resources they need to give our kids a world-class education. I believe in both of these areas, Mr. Brand. You exceed the standard. With the return of Mr. Trenum, we know that he will step aside from this role and will step back into a more familiar one. My hope is that at some point, he continues to be an integral part of PWCS in whatever capacity he may select. As the parent of three children in this school system, I wanted the opportunity to say thank you for your service and professionalism for all of us. I wish you the best of luck going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Ms. Jadeen Lawson.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Vice Chair and other school board members, Dr. Walts, Ms. McGowan, nice to be with you here tonight. Dr. Bishop, I think you took my speech. You couldn't have said it any better. Thank you so much. Sean, I was sitting in a chair back there a little over a year ago when this board appointed you to serve as the acting Brentsville representative, and this is bittersweet to see this tonight, your last meeting. We're, of course, thrilled that Gil has returned to American soil, and we look forward to him taking his seat back. But I can't think of anybody who could serve in Gil's absence more than you. You've done a fantastic job. You have served your constituents, just like Dr. Bishop spoke of, and I've had such a pleasure working with you to serve Brentsville district as a whole. You're a class act, and I hope to see you continue your advocacy for Prince William County schools and the community as a whole. For those of you who may not know this, I met Mr. Brand about five or six years ago through emailing me as a candidate to the Brentsville district when I first ran in 2011 because of his strong concerns about Rollins Ford Road. And that's how we got to know each other a little bit, and now I feel like I know you so much more, and you truly have a servant's heart. And it's been, again, just such a pleasure to work with you, and I couldn't miss this opportunity to come down tonight and publicly speak and praise you. You've done a marvelous job. You've been put through the fire for the last year. You and your family have suffered a family death on top of everything else, and you are just a really remarkable person. So thank you for everything that you've done. And while I'm here, I want to shout out to the Brentsville district principals. I have the pleasure of knowing all four of the principals that are here tonight. Dr. Bishop, my son is a freshman at Patriot, and of course, my daughter graduated there a couple of years ago. So kudos to him. He's a fabulous principal. And Ms. Porter-Lucas is an amazing principal at Gainesville Middle, and of course, the other two principals are fabulous too. So you're doing a great job in the Brentsville district. Thank you so much, Dr. Walts.
Thank you. Moving on to item 1301, the annual school calendar, and this item is on for information.
Good evening, Chairman Jesse, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, Dr. Casada, the Director of the Office of Accountability, will present the 2018-19 Annual School Calendar Development Process and Options for your consideration. Dr. Casada?
Good evening, Vice Chairman Jesse, school board members, Dr. Walts. As Mrs. Goss said, we're here to start thinking about 2018-19 and that calendar. Mr. Brand, I believe this bookends your time here, the calendar for this year and the calendar for next year. So just to remind the board and the public that we have a requirement from the state for at least 180 days of instruction and a minimum of 990 instructional hours. So this calendar was based on past calendars, as well as state requirements, federal holidays, and the decisions made by the board last year. With those parameters in place, it tends not to be much flexibility in calendar development. The board has received and it's posted in eBoard two proposed calendar options, one for pre-Labor Day, one for post-Labor Day. Just for the public to know, those options are also posted on the school calendar website for everyone to have easy access. You don't have to search for them. So I'm going to go through these quickly. So you just approved changes, policies at the last two meetings, and so in conjunction with our regulation, you've got two options for you tonight. We did things slightly differently. We presented those options with a representative committee for their input in August, and they provided feedback via an online survey tool. I'll show you a cool thing that we did with that at the end. Superintendent staff saw the drafts in August, and we're providing these options for you. Just for contextual background, we continue to qualify for a pre-Labor Day opening for 1819 and the two years after that. If we have no more snow, then we could be an issue in a problem situation, but I will try to find a magic wand to wave for snow. I haven't found one yet, but anyway, so you've got two options coming to you tonight. The pre-Labor Day option would start on August 27th, and the post-Labor Day would start the day after Labor Day, September 4th. Just as an FYI, before we get started, I'll jump to the conclusion. The committee and the superintendent's staff had preferences for the pre-Labor Day option. The superintendent's staff recommendation is that option. All right, so what we're going to do, if you remember how we've done this before, you're going to have visual representation and then verbal for our different kinds of learners, and we'll do the pre-Labor Day one first. Just to let you know that the calendars are very similar, other than when they start and end, so it's going to go quickly. So this shows you the first semester of the pre-Labor Day option. As I said, school would start on the 27th of August. Labor Day, of course, would be a holiday. The calendar would have that professional learning day on Columbus Day, that one that's coming up for us next week. That's been in place since 2014-15. November is our fun Swiss cheese month. It's a little less complicated than last year. The end of the first marking period would coincide with Election Day. Schools would be closed on Election Day, but that day would continue to be a teacher workday or parent conference day because it's not a presidential election year. This gets revisited with the committee every year, and their preference continues to be only in presidential elections or the building's completely closed, but there will be no students present. Veterans Day holiday is observed on Monday, the 12th of November, so it's a different week than that week, so it's a little less disruptive, and we continue the process, sorry, the practice of having the day before Thanksgiving as a full-day holiday for our students. Given the timing of when Christmas and New Year's fall, the recommendation is to have winter break start on the 21st of December and go through, school starting back up on January, on January 2nd, which is a Wednesday. The first semester would end at the end of January with an elementary school half-day conference, and then the workday on January 28th. Here's our second semester of pre-Labor Day. Spring break would fall in, I'm sorry, August, April that year, so the third marking period would actually end before spring break, and so spring break would be the 15th through the 19th of April, and school would end on Tuesday, June 11th. Okay? That's pre-Labor Day. Post-Labor Day, as I said, very similar, other than it would start a week later, a week and a day later, on September 4th, the day after Labor Day. Because of the connection to Election Day, the first marking period would still end then, which means it's a little shorter. Everything I said about Thanksgiving and Christmas and all that is the same. Again, the only difference, drum roll please, is the last day of school would be a week later, on June 18th. Okay? For those people who like to see the dates written out, here they are. So again, it shows you the different first days of school, that division-wide professional learning day, again, that's coming up next week. Days that were closed for students in November for the conferences, as well as for Veterans Day. You can read all of these: Thanksgiving break, winter break, conference days, all of those. And again, the only difference is the last day of school would be June 11th or June 18th. As I said, the only differences are start and end, and the length of the first and the fourth marking periods because of the starting and the ending point, and the connection of the first marking period to Election Day. Proposed, you know, beginning-of-the-year dates for teachers. Teachers would report a week before school starts, and new teachers would report a couple days before that. Let's see. Okay, so as I said, we got some cool feedback from committee members, so we asked them questions, and the vast majority recommended the, preferred the pre-Labor Day option. Other feedback we got is, of course, if you can find a way to extend winter break but not extend the school year, can you do that? There, you know, was one comment about completely closing schools on Election Day. Some folks want to add teacher workdays within the calendar, but still end when we want to end. Extend spring break, and there was one comment about disconnecting spring break from Easter so that you could have it at a stable point in time. The little word map to the right kind of shows you the words that came out the most in comments about why we prefer a pre-Labor Day option, and a lot of it was about having the time before testing, the time earlier in the year, and not just SOL testing, but those advanced tests in high school, AP, IB, et cetera, so that that time is up front and not at the end. So I thought that graphic was kind of a cool one for to share with you. Finally, as I said, the superintendent's staff and the committee strongly recommend the pre-Labor Day option. Just to give you some considerations, if there was something changed, CARE was taken to balance the marking period length to the greatest extents possible. We have courses that have length-of-time requirements, for example. Any substantial changes to the calendar could necessitate some after-the-fact changes to the marking period dates, which also impact interim and report card schedules. So that's my caveat for you, and that's it.
Dr. Casada, you are in your element.
You know, who doesn't love the calendar, Mrs. Jesse? Everyone's favorite topic.
I know, I know. Thank you very much. Board members, comments?
It's like Doogie Howser.
Mr. Wilks.
So I'm going to play a scenario, and I think the wrong person is not here to hear this. We're in March, and we haven't used a snow day, and maybe we can record this clip again. I know we made that awesome, I know we made that awesome cartoon this past year, but can you explain, so maybe we don't have to go through this over again, why we cannot just end the school year earlier because we don't use snow days? I figure the calendar is an appropriate point to maybe ask that. I know people are probably, that's the furthest thing from their mind. I'm from Michigan, so it'll be snowing soon up there, but would love to hear kind of that again, just to get that out there, because I'm sure this will pop up in a couple of months, three months, four months or something, why we just don't cut the year off or cut Fridays off for the rest of the year and stuff like that.
Sure, that's a great question, Mr. Wilk. And I'm from Chicago, so it'll snow there, you know, relatively soon, right after Michigan. So as I stated at the beginning, there's a requirement for school divisions to start the year with 180 days at least, and you saw that 990 hours, and folks will go, "Okay, well, our days are longer than the state required minimum," so we have those banked hours, and we hear about that when we do have snow closings and how much time we have left, which is great. So that's kind of our insurance policy, right? But we're not allowed to proactively shorten the year below 180. That extra time only comes into play in an emergency or situation where we're closing due to inclement weather, which can be snow, it can also be flooding, it can be Hurricane, Superstorm Sandy closed us a few years ago in October. So it's for all these things you can't predict, but that 180 days is tied to the amount of time some courses are required to have in session at the high school level, for example, requirements for our students in terms of service time for our students with disabilities and others, and so there's a lot that has to be accomplished in a given year, and so we're not allowed to proactively shorten the year below that minimum. We have that extra time built into our day for a variety of reasons, most importantly, instruction, but if we need that time before we have to tack on time, that's how it works. So it's really only one direction. Is that a good scenario, synopsis? Okay. You're welcome.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Dr. Casada, you're like on fire tonight. I love this new Dr. Casada. It's great. I feel like I'm like actually in a fun game show or something. Fantastic for a school calendar topic. I just want to say once again that I appreciate your effort and the community's effort, the school community's effort in putting together the school calendar. Believe it or not, I've actually already been asked when you were going to present and when we were going to vote on it. So I think that it's amazing. I just wanted to, I'm curious, as we move along and we have more diversity within our schools, if there's any consideration or if anybody had asked about recognition for other major religious holidays, because we are off like Christmas, and I know, I noticed that there was a comment on there about disconnecting Easter from spring break, so I feel like that's kind of becoming an issue as our population grows and we have a more diverse student body. Obviously not for this year, but just wanted to know if that is something that has come up or if it's under consideration for our outlining years.
That topic has come up a couple of times, and it can certainly be something that when we reach out and, you know, for the committee for the next year, we can ask about. I know that there are other calendars that are posted related to religious and other holidays, and there are considerations and exceptions for students related to attendance and things for that. By convention, right, we have a winter break and a spring break, and they had originally been tied to particular religious holidays, but we can certainly ask that question moving forward, but it wasn't a focus of this year's calendar development.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Now you explained why we don't cut off. Can you explain it so that I can tell it to an 11-year-old, excuse me, 12-year-old?
All right, I will try.
You've got to make it good.
Okay, I'll do my very best. I have a 12-year-old, so let me see if I am going to channel and, you know, think I'm speaking to my son. So again, so schools are required to, our purpose, right, is to have, to teach kids, right? So we have, so it's their job, I'm thinking of 12-year-olds, their job to go to school. So we have a minimum amount of time, you know, to cover the curriculum, right? And so the state sets that as at least 180 days. But what happens is, rather than having to add time onto the year if we have snow days, which of course 11- and 12-year-olds like, right, our days are longer, which give us more time during the day for instruction, but also give us kind of money in the bank in case we have an emergency, right? So we can use that in an emergency, but we can't just go and spend it on something else. So we have to, we can't just chop the school year shorter than 180 days up front. We're not allowed to. And does that help?
Well, you're getting there. She may have the conference with you. The point was, for her, was that as we got toward the end of this school year, and we had more days set aside for snow days or inclement weather or whatever else we're going to get, and she could not understand why not just cut it and move everything up. So, but, so if we, you got it?
Okay, I think so. So we didn't- So, we didn't really have a bunch of days set aside. What we had was this extra time in case of emergency only, right? We didn't have days, and because last year, a day was actually taken off for the primary, there, you know, there have been days when we, when we have down to 180, so that's why this one starts with 181. So you kind of have one day you could play with at the end of the year if you so chose. But if you have only 180, you can't just take it off, because we don't have snow days. We have extra snow time built in when you get below 180, so you can't then give that back. If you go to school for 180 days, that's what you're supposed to do, right? You're not going extra, people aren't working extra, it's all part of the contract and the time that students are supposed to be there. If we go less than that, before we have to add on and make it more burdensome, we can rely on that banked time. Does that help? Did I get there?
Yes, it does, and so I expect to see you at Beville anytime soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Noted.
Anyone? Mr. Brand.
Dr. Casada, I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
The 181 that you mentioned, if we were, for example, to have a horrendous winter, you know, the complete opposite of this year, what's that first day that gets taken away? I'm assuming sometime in the spring.
So the first day, that's a great question, and I, sorry, I didn't put it in the presentation. So the way that we've done it was to identify, first, it would be the President's Day holiday if we hit it that soon, which I, you know, I doubt we will, because it's not even the 181. That's if we got to the point of, you know, severe, right, and we used all of our hours. And then the teacher workday in April, and then you would start adding days at the end of the year if you needed to. So the, it's a last resort to add time at the end of the year, and we shouldn't have to, because we'd have to have pretty horrific knock-on, you know. I said "snow one," I didn't say like "snow machine." So that's, it would be built in to not add time onto the end of the year, so those would be the dates in order.
Anyone else? Mr. De.
Madam Chairwoman. So last year, we made this slight tweak to the calendar, reinstating school days on December 21st and April 2nd due to some tweaks that people wanted. Did you look at those and see if we could work in those considerations, or is the way that different days fell not necessitate?
So those are, that's a great question, and I'm not surprised that someone asked it. And so this year, we started, and we are always going to propose a calendar that has at least 181 days in it for it. So the, the tweaks that got made were, one, to shorten the school year to 180, and two, for this current year, and to take the Monday after spring break and shorten winter break to get school to start, end on Friday, June 8th. There was really only one day you could play with, with that, you'd have, we already don't have the Monday after spring break as a holiday in this proposed calendar. You could start winter break a day later, but that would be the 20, you'd be going through the 21st of December, and I know from past experience, that hasn't been a preference of the board or the community, but that still gets you with, and having school still on Monday, June 11th, with 181 days. So those are considerations that could be made, but that's why they weren't, they weren't proposed.
I would just like to thank you for the very vibrant presentation. It's hard to do a vibrant presentation on calendars. I just wanted to make a note that you work with the election board so that school is closed, but I did notice one problem, and perhaps the associates can talk to the principals about this, on, on those election days, when parents are coming in for a conference, we really need a clearly delineated, different entrance for the parents, because when the parents have to go through those people outside passing out flyers and saying, "Please just leave me alone, no, I'm not voting." So if they could, if principal, principals could keep that in mind, that was one of the complaints that I received, that they, they were passing through these people, standing in line, passing out flyers. So if we could do that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we're moving on to superintendent's time, 1401. 1401 on the superintendent's time. Advisory, appointments, Dr. Walz is on for action.
Madam Chairwoman.
Madam Chair.
I'll move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments of Laura McVicker, Kristy Bowie Young, and Anthony Friedman to represent superintendent on Special Advisory, Education Advisory Council for a two-year term.
A second.
Okay. Mr. Deutch, a second. Aye. Ms. Williams.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Sawyers and Satterwhite, motion passed.
Moving on to 1402, superintendent's time, Dr. Walz.
Thank you. October is Bullying Prevention Month, which reminds us that bullying has no place in our schools or anywhere else. Here in PWCS, we work together with students, employees, and parents to prevent it. The school board approved a resolution earlier tonight noting the upcoming observance of National Red Ribbon Week, and you heard some of our students speak. We ask everyone to work with your school to help share information on drug abuse prevention, and join in to wear red as well on Red Ribbon Day. Now let's watch a brief video public service announcement on Red Ribbon Week.
America has a growing drug crisis. Fight back along with Prince William County Public Schools. Wear red on Tuesday, October 24th to show your commitment to help our schools and community get rid of drugs.
And it's the time of year to learn about the many middle school specialty programs our school division offers to students, and for them to acquire in-depth knowledge in fields of special interest. Middle school information sessions will be held on October 9th and 10th here at the Kelly Leadership Center, and will cover math and science, world languages, and international baccalaureate middle years programs. PWCS will participate in the annual Great Southeast Shakeout Earthquake Drill across many states on Thursday, October 19th at 10:19 a.m. Just six years ago, a 5.8 magnitude earthquake struck Virginia. I urge families to review their safety plans for all natural disasters. I'm extremely proud to announce that we have already met one of the school board's 2017-2018 goals for the superintendent and the school division. 91.8% of our students in the class of 2017 graduated on time, which continues to outpace the statewide and national results. In fact, our on-time graduation rate has risen every year for the past 10 years in a row. This kind of success can only be achieved because the important work that begins in our elementary schools continues through our middle schools and culminates in high school. On behalf of our administrative leadership team and the school board, I thank and congratulate over 11,000 employees for their outstanding work as we strive together to provide a world-class education. And in closing, on behalf of the superintendent's staff, all of our employees and our students and their families, I offer my sincere appreciation to acting Brentsville School Board member Shawn Brand for his service while Gil Trenton was on deployment. That's a whole lot to learn coming in on a dime like that, and I think you did an incredible job of participating, educating yourself on issues, working with fellow board members, and certainly with the administration and our leadership team. We wish you continued success, and we thank you for an awesome job and your support at Prince William County Public Schools. Thank you so much.
Moving on to item 1501, Safe School Advisory Council, and action is expected on this particular item.
Madam Chair.
Hold on. Yes, Mrs. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments of H. Tracy Williams to represent the Gainesville District, excuse me, District, and Wendy Dempsey to represent the Whitbridge District on the Safe Schools Advisory Council for a two-year term.
Second.
Madam Chair, I'll second that.
Mr. Brand.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Sawyers and Satterwhite, motion passed.
Moving on to item 1502, Revision of Policy 737, Searches and Seizures. Second reading by Mr. Klein, action is required on this item.
Ms. Jesse.
Hold on. Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the revision of Policy 737, Searches and Seizures.
Second.
Madam Chairwoman, I'll second.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Sawyers and Satterwhite, motion passed.
Moving on to item 1503, Revision of Policy 73757, Administrative Medication and Temporary First Aid, First Reading. Ms. Goss.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Jesse, School Board Members, and Dr. Walz. Tonight, we are here to present the changes and revisions to Policy 757. The changes that were made were made to align this policy with new legislative mandates that are now in the Virginia Code. That's really the summary of it. The changes that were made are mandated by, by code, and so it's not something that we have choice over.
No discussion? Thank you, Ms. Goss. I was.
It might be.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item 1504, Special Education Advisory Committee Appointment, Action, Mr. Deutch.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Debbie Petnesky to represent the Coles District for CAC for a two-year term.
Have a second.
I second that.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Sawyers and Satterwhite, motion passed.
Moving on to item 1505, Board Matters. We will, let's start with Mr. Deutch.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to begin, Ms. Satterwhite was not able to make the meeting due to family situation, but she asked me to read a statement for it. She said, "I'm so sorry that I was unable to be here tonight for Mr. Brand's last meeting. Mr. Brand, you joined our board during a difficult season, you really didn't have time for a learning curve. Thank you for giving selflessly to your constituents, the Brentsville District Schools, and to our board with your time, compassion, understanding, humble spirit, perseverance, and dedication. You have been a blessing and friend to all of us. I will miss our many phone calls and conversations. I look forward to continuing to work with you on Brentsville-Gainesville Budget Committee. Enjoy your break. Budget season is just around the corner. Farewell, my friend, again. Thank you." I, let's see, we've had, I guess the last two weeks, we've had a lot of fun. I was at a Boy Scouts meeting, got to hang out with a bunch of kids and talk to them about government, what we do here, answer questions, and actually looking forward to having another Cub Scout meeting coming up pretty soon as well, and had a number of other meetings at some of the different schools around, and got to continue to meet with people, and always appreciate it. But today, I just want to thank Shawn again, because I don't think enough people have done it yet. But, you know, it was, it was a memorable meeting when you joined. I think it was a fairly long meeting when we finally voted you in, and I think you knew more than most of us what you were getting into. But to be a board member for 12 months is very, is very different, and I think you jumped in very quickly, knowing as well as anyone what you were getting into, and working very hard to throw yourself into the position, to research what you were doing, to get involved in the issues, be, continue being very active, just in a more prominent way in your, in the schools in your area, and probably in more schools than you were originally. And I just want to thank you for your grace, your steadiness, the way that you have been a very positive person through a lot of, a lot of different instances, and I've appreciated your counsel, your wisdom, and your thoughts, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, and thank you so much for your sacrifice.
Mr. Wilks.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I, yeah, you liked that, that was pretty fancy, huh? Now I'm frozen. All right, so a couple of quick things. So it was a busy couple of weeks, I know all of us, back-to-school nights, I went to 12 of my 14 back-to-school nights. Last year, I did 14 for 14, but I was telling Ms. Jesse, that's like very unrealistic. It's like literally you're just popping in and waving a goodbye, so I went to a bunch of them. I also had the pleasure of stopping by during the day, visiting Patty, Forest Park, and Ashland, attended a Safe Schools meeting on Monday night, a great presentation on youth violence that I think we're gonna be hearing more about. That's one of our goals this year as a committee to talk about. I wanted to talk, we've alluded to the budget, and we've heard a lot in the news about what others think that the school board should be doing with our budget, so I wanted to talk about some of my budget priorities going into this budget season, and lay those out as we get moving forward. One, as I've advocated the last two years, Washington REED will be now available next year as a potential early childhood education program, 10 additional classrooms, for expansion of early childhood and pre-K. That is a passion of mine, and nothing helps turn around that learning curve like bringing kids earlier on into a structured environment and that early engagement in learning. Looking at estimated costs with Mr. Klein and that, to do that, and add that staff, that would be additional, to add administrator, to add increased bus routes, looking at over $2.5 million. That's a major priority of mine in this upcoming budget season. IT is one of the highest field, growing fields of demand. Over 30% of all IT jobs are located in northern Virginia. I have the pleasure of representing one of the two IT specialty programs in the county, the other one, of course, out in Battlefield. It is a major priority of mine to make sure and give those schools additional support, that they're using industry-standard software computers, and that we're doing more to help meet those needs in both of those buildings. I think our teachers are doing a lot in those buildings, but any increased funding and support would be a major goal of mine to help those two buildings. Another project and passion of mine, of course, is special education. I was talking with Ms. Satterwhite, who's also a major advocate for special needs students. Obviously, I would like to add additional resources and additional positions, autism, dyslexia, and some of the other specialty areas to share across the county. And then finally, of course, I always want to make sure that our teachers not only get a raise, but they get their step. So those are my four major priorities this year. Read between the lines of what you will with that. Unless those are funded, I have no desire to talk really about any of these other special projects that we hear about in the community. Those are passionate and goals that I want to make sure we secure for our students, and unless we're able to fund those, I don't feel that it's appropriate to try to mandate other ones. other ones. Thank you so much.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not ready... quite ready for budget season, but I'm glad you're jumping out there, Justin. I like a lot of those things. I just want to start by saying I did not make it to all my back-to-school nights, but I will be coming to visit schools regardless, as I try to do every year. I have been out and about a little bit, though. I was able to attend the first family night at Vaughn Elementary School. I think Media Services still likes me, and they're going to post the picture. There they are. So I was able to sit in the news story pit at Vaughn and read to the students, and actually was educated myself, because I don't know Spanish, and so I had wonderful help from some of the parents there, and actually some of the students who were glad to connect... to correct my pronunciation. So that was awesome, and it was a fun time had by all. The students had their own version of sip and paint. We read stories. There was face painting. There was a little bit of everything, food going on. It was fantastic. The school looks wonderful, and the feedback that I received from the parents and the community was amazing, and I just wanted to thank Mark Boyd, the principal, and all the staff there for all of their time and service that they put into this wonderful event. Thank you for the invitation. I'm happy to come read again. I get lots of practice now at home, so reading out loud again all over to a preschool, so it was great fun, and I really appreciate it. In addition, I also just did a board taping at Featherstone Elementary School, which you should see soon, being posted. Anybody who ever wanted to see me wear a superhero cape, now is the time. I'm always in my house saying, "Use your superpowers for good," so I thought it was great that I actually got to put on a cape and say it for everyone else. So their theme there this year is superheroes, and they have a fantastic program in the school. I have to say, every school that I've been to this year, who... the individuals who are doing the artwork, I mean, just absolutely outstanding. Every school building that I've been in this year, there is a real connectivity going on with our community, our students, a sense of time and representation, and making them feel like that building is also their home away from home, and I'm very proud of that because images mean a lot. So I just wanted to thank all of the schools who have updated their artwork, and to all of the wonderful artists who have contributed their time and efforts to making the schools look beautiful. It just really means a lot, and I wanted to thank you personally for that. In other news, I want to give a shout-out to Freedom. I haven't been there yet, but following along, Mr. Wilks' love for special education, and the Satterwhites, they have, as I tried to remind everyone, I didn't do last time, a bistro bus that they pull out at games. So if you have not been to Freedom during a football game, I highly recommend you go. I'm, as we all know, not a particular lover of athletics, because I can't run, but I go when I can to participate at Freedom. Their bistro bus is absolutely fantastic. The art department converted a school bus into a food truck on wheels. It is run by the students. The food is great. They also serve lunch during the day at Freedom in the... by the same students who run the bistro bus. As someone who unfortunately has to dine out a lot, I can absolutely tell you without a shadow of a doubt that the customer service I receive in that building from them at the lunch when I went was far better and superseded most of the restaurants that I've ever been to. So if you have an opportunity, you're available for lunch, I advise you to go check it out. It is a wonderful experience, and it's something to be proud of. Next up... I know, I'm taking a long time tonight. I just wanted to make a few announcements. So Governor's School will be having an informational night on October 14th, and again, December 9th. If you're a student or you're interested in learning more about Governor's School, I would highly recommend that you attend. It will be held at Innovation Park at Mason in Manassas. It is a fabulous program. I can't say enough about it. Those students blow me away continuously, year after year, and my understanding is that Governor's School this year, not only are we in full attendance, but we had a wait list. So that is completely amazing. I'd like to give kudos to Dr. Calhoun and to all of the staff that are involved in operating the Governor's School. The program continues to grow and exceed expectations, and for anyone who has not been, the... the projects that the students put on are absolutely mind-blowing, so I highly encourage you to check it out. We did have a group... a couple of groups last year come and present to us at the board, and I hope that they'll be able to do that again this year, the end of the year. We also have our upcoming Parents Summit. The first one is October 28th on the... I think in the Brentsville District, maybe? Don't... Maybe at Battlefield High School? Battlefield High School. If you have not attended that, if you have a rising ninth grader or a high school... if you are a high school parent or guardian, I highly recommend that you do. I have been now, I think, two or three years. Every time I go, I learn something new. It is an absolutely wonderful program. I encourage all of you to attend. I also wanted to reiterate Dr. Wilts' message about the middle school specialty programs. That will be held here in the Kelly Building on October 9th and October 10th, and I just want to speak to all of the parents that I know that I went to school with. Yes, you should go. I ran into several of them, like, "What? Why should I go? We... school here, we know..." No, you don't. We don't know everything. I don't know everything, so please go. It's awesome, and we at Prince William County Schools offer so many programs, it's worth checking out. You just never know what you might discover, and it's always a benefit to your student. Finishing up, two more things. So we have a college fair on October 12th at Garfield, and while I'm on the topic of Garfield, I might steal your thunder a little bit, but I just wanted to personally congratulate Dr. Sadaki. I saw the picture with Senator Warner, and it's just amazing. He won Principal of the Year for... This is the first time? Third time? First time? I'm looking over at the Associate Superintendent. It says, "Not any head?" Yes. That's an amazing award, and we should be very proud of him. I know I am. He's a wonderful gentleman. I know it goes against everything Woodbridge alumni. I'm really conflicted this year with this, because I got kids playing on one team for Garfield and kids playing on Woodbridge's team, so I just... I have to stand in the middle of the field or something. I don't know. So, and finishing up, I also want to congratulate all of Food Services and all of the stu... everybody, basically, who was involved in doing our free breakfast earlier this week when we had the First Lady of Virginia come. I'm, of course, personally biased because my son was there helping to serve free breakfast, and thank you to whoever got him an official pitcher. That has never happened before. I don't know who did it, but that's fabulous. And... Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I think that it... I've heard nothing but positive responses. I was getting text messages, not from him, during the event from people who attended, who said that the program... that the event went off without a hitch. I saw the pictures. Dr... Mr. Wright at Potomac, just as always, I am just flabbergasted and thrilled that you are a principal here at Potomac High School. You did such a great job, and it was such a wonderful event. And thank you again to all of our Food Services staff. I know plenty of workers in the cafeteria who got up extra early that morning to serve breakfast, and I know our students appreciated it greatly, and I think that... Yep, that's it. So thank you, and we'll see you in the next meeting.
We have to do a return to Mr. Wilks. He wanted to add a comment.
Sorry, I was so fired up, I forgot to say something, and good luck to Sean. And Sean, we go back, and, you know, as we were talking about that late meeting, but earlier on, I came out very early in supporting putting you on this board, no matter what your party or position was. I think it's a matter of, you know, who best represents the district, and I'm really honored to work with you and lucky you. So thank you, and we'll be in touch.
Sir Lawson.
They know the chairman is not here, so now they're just trying to play with me. You're just breaking protocol. Okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jessie, I'm sorry, board, but I also was all excited too, and I just wanted to extend my thanks to Mr. Brown. It's been a pleasure serving with you on the school board and also on the joint CIP Committee with the Board of County Supervisors. Everything that has been said tonight, I second to the highest extent. Also, being a fellow Mason alumni, it's been great sitting next to you. You have your Mason tie on tonight, so it's been wonderful bonding with you over that experience, but I must say that you absolutely embody professionalism, and it's absolutely been a pleasure. I tease you a lot about being a Boy Scout, but I could not think of a better representative for that organization. You really have outdone us all, and I'm very thankful that I've had the opportunity to know you and to work with you. It's been a pleasure. I've learned a lot, and thank you so much for your service.
Ms. Dolch.
My apologies. I actually forgot to read something, and so just wanted to read it real quick. This is to Mr. Sean Brand, Prince William County School Board, Brentsville District. Dear Mr. Brand, I am writing today to recognize your service as an interim member of the Prince William County School Board. Your time in public service demonstrates a rare sense of dedication to your community. I am pleased to recognize someone with such a strong sense of civic responsibility and leadership. You have shown a genuine desire to positively impact the Brentsville District and Prince William County. I admire your willingness to step in your district's time of need. You have served Prince William County School System well, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Once again, thank you very much for your service over the past 13 months, and please don't hesitate to reach out if I can be assistance in the future. With kind regards, I remain sincerely Rob Whitman, Member of Congress.
Ms. Lawson.
Yeah, I'll start off saying nice things about you, but I won't. Okay. This has been a great beginning of the school year. I actually made it to all my schools and said something, especially, you know, "Look at the elementary people. These little short people that come in, and especially the kindergarteners. I want you to know that you are not as smart as they are." Why? Because I asked them, and they said they were the smartest. So I went from school to school asking that question, and yes, they are smart. They're just coming because they have nothing else better to do. I said, "Well, okay, this is great." You know, I really do keep gravitating back to say something about him, but I'm just not going to do that right now. This is the remarkable thing to me this school year is that I found it easy. Now, there is maybe something wrong there with me, but I found it very, very easy. My principals, and I know Mr. Erickson can tell you that I have some of the greatest principals that you have here in Prince William County Schools. They love their job. They love coming. My middle school principals, they love their job. I don't particularly find them pleasing, the middle school kids, and I'm sure most parents don't either at the middle school level, but they're smart. That's the thing. They're learning here in Prince William County, and because I guess I get tired of listening to relatives that try to tell you where you should live, because that's where the schools are the best. The schools are the best wherever you park your child, every single day. We are doing our best, and it looks good. I like the test scores that I have seen so far from last year. I like the fact, Dr. ... Lord, I remember someone's called you, Dr. Saki, Dr. Walts, of the on-time graduation rate. I worried about that. I thought about that a lot last year. I know you did, and it turned out great. And I just think that we should all be careful about what we say about places and schools. I don't care where that school is located. You've got some good teachers inside of those buildings, and that's the main thing, and they're educating these kids every single day, every day. If you don't believe me, go check it out one day yourself and see if you know as much as they know, especially my kindergarteners. I just love them to death. And Ms. Lawson, Janine, I'm glad to see you sitting here, and you can hear all the wonderful things we're saying, because pretty soon, we'll be in budget, and you'll already know that we're great, and so we will look for the money just to roll in, won't we? Won't we, audience? Yes, we will, and so I expect that from you. I shall pray on that from you, too. Okay? Only one other thing, that we're... I'm looking at trying to do something different, and I'm bugging the crap... Oops, that's a bad word to say. Well, I'm bugging everybody regarding my associate superintendents to be of some assistance, because I know this stuff so well. I'm just going to bring them along to help me put this program together that I'm looking at, and I appreciate all your work that you guys work with me. Sometimes I expect certain things and don't get them, and I still expect them anyway. So sometimes you just need to say, "Stop with your expectations." So, and our police back here in the back, he's always back there in his blue shirt. Hello. He is. This, to me, is just more about who we are here in Prince William County Schools. We happen to like everybody, and we show it, and we say it, and it's okay to say it and to show it. So I like you, audience, even when you're not happy with me, I still like you. So take care of yourselves, watch your children, and you'll learn something. Thank you. Don't we always forget Sean? Oh, goodness. Sean, I went through a lot to get you here. I just want you to know that. And I don't know what you're leaving... You didn't get my permission just yet. Do you know how hard I worked to get you here? I have enjoyed you. I am glad you were here. Too bad we can't... I can't figure out how to keep you here. So that's it. I'm through. I can't win.
The ban of the hour. Sean, would you like to say something to Sean?
I whispered to Ms... First of all, it's a wonderful opportunity to follow Ms. Lawson. She had me cracking up the whole time, and I did tell her, "If I ever want a new job, I just need to take a video of this meeting tonight and just hand it over. Here you go. Look at this." First of all, I want to thank Nathan, the young man that was here earlier tonight to give us these red ribbons. He said to wear it on October 24th. October 24th, I will be chairing a Piney Branch Advisory Council meeting, so I will make sure that I put that on that night, and actually, Mr. Trinum, who will be back here soon, will be our special guest that night, so maybe we'll have to get him one as well. We did have some scouts in the room, and there was a Boy Scout reference earlier from Ms. Williams. I definitely appreciate scouting as a scouting dad, as an Eagle Scout, so as always, I'm prepared with some prepared words tonight, so I'll jump in right into those. First of all, it was great to visit a few schools since the last meeting for back-to-school nights. I went to Westgate Elementary, Victory, Bristow Run, and New Directions. I want to thank you to the administration, the staff, families of all their schools for those warm welcomes, and I want to say, "Keep up the great work to all those principals in those schools." So Vincent, Ray, Jack, and Icon, it was a pleasure to see all of you and walk around with your schools with you. Another update on Mr. Trinum. Mr. Trinum, as Ms. Lawson mentioned earlier, is back in the good old US of A. He showed up last week. He is currently in the Norfolk area, wrapping up his deployment of the last year. He will be back on the dais here at the next meeting on October 18th, just in time, I think it probably will be an agenda item, but to vote on that 2018-2019 school calendar. And I will tell you, it's definitely great... It will be great to see him, but it's also been great to actually talk to him in the same time zone, because when we talked in those eight-hour gaps, it was... it was quite a challenge sometimes, but we worked it out. For my final Board Matters, as the acting school board member for the Brentsville District, some song lyrics popped in my mind, and I'm a music guy, so I like music. So these words of a performer who often comes to the Brentsville District popped in my head. Some of it's magic, some of it's tragic, but I had a good life all the way. So this experience, I think, has definitely blessed me with many positives, and I just wanted to focus on some of those. The opportunity to serve my community, both the incredible Brentsville District that I live in and Prince William County as a whole. The opportunity to make new friends. Many people throughout these schools and county, they were unknown to me, unknown to me before last September, but I will tell you, I consider many of those people that I've gotten to know to be my friends now. Includes many people on this dais to my left and right, includes many people in this boardroom tonight, and I want to thank them for their support and kindness to me over the last year, and I'm going to miss seeing these people on a regular basis. The hooky part of me, as a teacher, I always believed I wanted to teach and to make a difference, and I think after seven years, hopefully, I did make a difference, and I think I did. So I do hope a little bit of what I've done over the last year has made a difference in terms of this role as an acting school board member. And as a teacher, I always discussed with my students that values of lifelong learning, and I will tell you, this year's definitely been a learning experience in many different ways, and I consider it all positive. So back to the song lyrics, I mentioned the word tragedy, and I think tragedy is probably too harsh a term, but nonetheless, there's a few not-so positives I definitely want to focus on, but I won't harp on them too much. First of all, I think one year may not be enough. I will tell you, after one year of service, I realize I'm still learning and still growing in this role, and I want you to kind of consider that for my fellow board members as well. Many have only served one year longer than I have. We are works in progress, and we... We are works in progress and we have good days and we have bad days. And I will tell you, the people I've gotten to know, many are trying to do their best and they're trying to learn from any mistakes of the past and they're, they're doing the best they can. I assume this will be a very political position. It may have turned out to be a lot more so than I expected, but as I've, I've kind of discovered and learned throughout my life, that I generally can work with people from all sides of the political spectrum. I think just generally, good people can work with good people, doesn't matter what they believe in. And there are a lot of people up here that are, that are up here for the right reasons, for the good, good reasons. In closing, I want to focus again, getting back to those song lyrics, on some of the magical parts of this experience, some images that just stick in my head. I just got some bullet points, I'll just read some of these out to you and I probably could go on and on, but I just kind of focused on a few. The outstretched hands of preschoolers who introduced themselves to me when I visited Victory for my board brief. The joyous faces of so many graduates at the graduation ceremonies that I attended, especially the students crossing the stage at the Hilton for the New Directions graduation. The opportunity for me and my fellow board members to share our backgrounds at our first board training, only three days after my first board meeting last year. The many citizens who bravely stood before us to voice their passions on a variety of topics of the last year during Citizens' Comments. The many students who we celebrated in this boardroom for their accomplishments during the 2016-2000 school year. The teachers and the principals we celebrated at Colgan High School, who are recognized by their peers and, and parents as some of the best in our county. And, and the chance to see my own two children, to, as scouts and singers in this boardroom from this dais. And I, I could go on and on, but I, I do want to thank everybody that came tonight and all the kind words that were said about me. Luckily, I'm not a big ego person or my head wouldn't be able to get through that door right now. But, you know, I may be hitting some of you up for a letter of recommendation in the future because it definitely seems like a good opportunity to do that. And I definitely want to wish the best to this board over the rest of the school year. Please keep your eye on the goal of doing what's best for all students in Prince William County Schools. And I, I think there's no way you can't achieve if that's your focus. If that's, if that's your end goal, you will be a success. And I have faith in you and all of you to do the right thing. Thank you.
I have a few items and I may say something to Mr. Brand. I'm not sure. I was able to attend back-to-school nights and I ran from school to school. I think three, three schools in one night and three schools in another night. And I have to tell you, there was something very consistent that happened and as I was running, I had 15 minutes to get to another school. Every time I went into a school, Dr. Waltz, your video was on. I saw you five or six times. And I, I just want to thank all the schools who I know that they have trouble, they have difficulty trying to schedule everything. So please, if I mention that we ran from school to school, please don't change anything that you're doing. As I've talked to various schools, not just in my district, they're talking about those second graders and somehow they're saying, you made us all go to, put the fifth graders in fifth grade trailers. That was not me. It was not me. However, I did talk to the principals about the second graders and I, and I truly understood as a principal why you needed to put the second graders in trailers because, as one principal said, the fifth graders are just too big and I've been in those trailers and you can't move with second graders in a trailer. But they worked everything out and I want to thank all of the principals. I did attend the, the governor's wife's visit to Prince William County and Ms. Williams' son was there and he was sharing, they had wonderful food and the grab and go. You know, I'm an elementary person and so during grab and go, there were no lines. All of these high schoolers just entered the hallway and grabbed food. And believe it or not, it was, it was done, it was organized chaos. It really worked well and I want to congratulate Potomac High School and all, for all they, they did. And to the principal there, Mr. Wright, thank you very much for inviting me. Fred Lynn had a heroes project this last Saturday. Bill Reed, and I, could I, I think I have a, a photo to be shown on the screen. There they are. And this is Mr. Bill Reed who's hugging, Bill Reed worked for us at Human Resources and he's now retired, but he's working at Lowe's. And he called and said, I, I, we have a heroes project, Lowe's wants to, to do landscaping in a school, select a school. And, you know, I, in Lake Ridge, we have several schools, but also the students from Aquaquan attend Fred Lynn. And my girls went to Fred Lynn. So Ms. Williams and all of us were there to watch as they ran, they did the landscaping in the garden, they did the butterfly garden and, and, I'm sorry. And the greenhouse. And it was a wonderful project, they were there all day. I also wanted to thank Sharon, Sharon Henry. Sharon Henry was there for the entire project. I want to thank Jill Palermo from the Inside Nova, she was there. Is it Inside Nova? Prince William County? Prince William? Times? Times, am I correct? She was there for the entire venue and I think Prince William Times did come later. But I just want to thank them for this project. So much has been done at that school. And Sharon and, and Ms. Williams and I also went to the Unity Church, had a grand opening there. I, I said Sharon does just extraordinary work because she was there for, until one or two o'clock in the afternoon. So I wanted to thank them for that. I also visited with Mr. Wright and Mr. Ken Bassett. And I, I don't have my budget plans in yet, but I do want to say that I've learned a lot on this board and I don't, I know when I don't know. And I've been studying high school and the one thing that, when I look at those kids and they throw those hats up in the air and I wonder what's going to happen next month and we are so much, I'm a college, I, I believe in college incentive programs and Dr. Waltz knows that, but I am more and more concerned about career opportunities for our kids. And so that's really one of the focuses I'm, I'm really interested in. I'd like to see every student that leaves this school division either enter college or has some career skill sets so that they could enter the workforce. And I think that's a goal, if we're world-class, I think we do not want our kids on the streets and just waiting to get in trouble. So that's one of the goals that I have. And now, to Mr. Brand. Well, because I am the acting chair tonight, I am the chair, I not only have comments, but I come with a gift. These other people didn't give you a gift, did they? No, they did not. So, I would like for you to please come over and I would like for the other board members to come around.
I'm very good at being Vanna.
Okay. And we're going to read this. And it is, Sharon, do you want to read it?
Okay. I'm just playing Vanna White here. It says, "Making a Difference Awarded to Sean L. Braun in Appreciation of Your Ded- of Your Dedication in Service to Prince William County's Public Schools 2016-2017."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we should go down there for the front.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah. You get to go down front. Everybody. Well, come on over here. A little bit closer. I'll get over here.
Is that better? Okay.
Okay. Okay, here we go.
And in record time.
Okay. Okay. Late, late, late. Where is the ethics and decorum for the board?
It's right there on that paper.
I know. Okay. Well, it is now 8:30. There be nothing further, we come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.